The flag, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Make that motion right now, is that right? Okay.
There's actually two motions.
Second. So the board has just come out of executive session and we're making a motion for council to move forward with land use enforcement proceeding. If the planning board finds submissions incomplete against Janes and June Realty LLC or and/or the Vinegar Hill LLC.
Uh, there is, we have a motion for, did you write that one down? No, we didn't make a motion.
No, 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 he wants to move the nomination.
Jim, we didn't have to make a motion.
No, 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 no.
It looks like the second order, make a motion for Stan Newboys as chairman.
Discussion. Phil, 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 you okay with not holding any officers or whatever?
I am.
Your stand?
Oh, boy, okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for vice chair.
Jason?
Yes.
Hi.
Motion, motion by Velma, seconded by Phil, Jason is vice chair, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed, Jason.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Jason. Looking for secretary, motion for secretary?
I'll make a motion, Velma, for nominating the secretary.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll take it.
All right, nobody oppose? Okay. All right, so we'll go to the normal order and then we'll hit all of the other boards after. Public forum, this is a part of the meetings where we encourage public participation. Anybody from the public want to speak on anything that is non-agenda related? You all set? Thank you, Jack. Yeah, all right. Okay, approval of the June 13th, 2022 minutes.
The only thing I saw, as much as I would love to see it in town key, is the stripper.
I see it, okay.
Oh, I missed that.
I would follow that around all day.
I thought, oh, I don't have to read those, I wasn't here, but I liked that.
All right.
You're gonna make the stripper a striper, huh?
So we have a motion as amended by Jason? Looking for a second? Phil is seconded. All those in favor?
And.
Huh?
I abstained, that wasn't fair.
Velma wasn't here. All right, I don't think we have any committee and board reports, I've got nothing from the RSU.
I can bring you up to speed a little bit, the River Committee has, we mailed out the, I don't know if you guys are aware, but we mailed out the 216 or 220 letters, 28 letters of Kenny Buck River Porter, and from what I understand, we're starting to get some responses back. So that's progressive.
Positive responses?
Yeah, yes, just owners seeking a little bit more information.
Good. Okay. I just noticed something I forgot to add. Okay. Managers report, crosswalk update.
Yes, just to give you an idea of the status of where we are right now, and some history, obviously, we met with the food truck folks and we met with Mario Bennett, we discussed the importance of placing a crosswalk in there. I took the opportunity, or the opportunity was presented to me by Mario with MDOT contacting Randy Illian and providing to me the standards that need to be abided by in terms of installing the crosswalk. At that point, it was my assumption that, that as long as we follow the standards, that we would be in compliance. In the course of that week, we put in the crosswalk, put the signs in, we're still looking for cost on lighted signals. I received a call from the sheriff's office, who was providing, I believe, erroneous information related to, he was under the impression that the property owner was the one that put the crosswalk in, and I assured him, no, it wasn't, it was the town that placed it in, the property owner was going to pay for the work. At that point, there was a huge amount of email exchanges, I finally was able to be included in one of those email exchanges where I noticed that there was a requirement as well as having a traffic engineer to review the work, sign off, and to approve or disapprove what's there, or add whatever else is there. So, having spoke to Randy about that, I reached out to Steve Blake, Steve has graciously said that he would take a look at the project and his comments and suggestions and whatever else needs to be done in order to satisfy the state for the work that's being done. So, that's where we are right now. Steve spoke to Roger, Roger filled him in, I got a call from Mario Bennett today, I guess the state was down there taking photographs of what we had done, Mario approached the state guy and asked him what he was doing and couldn't get a straight answer, so he was only there to take photographs. So, I'm sure I'll hear more, but we will do what the traffic engineer informs us that we need to do, and we will do what the state wants us to do. So, we'll follow the rules. If I had known that we needed one in the beginning, we would have certainly hired one at that time, so, little snafu, but hopefully we're on the right direction to get it corrected.
They are aware that there's no after dark operations there, right?
I'm not sure if they know that for sure, nobody's asked me that specifically, I'm not sure if it really pertains to the installation of the crosswalk, and I don't know what the standards would say in terms of whether it needs to have a signalized or a flashing yellow light activation idea based on the speed, the sight distance, I, from what I understand, speed, sight distance, traffic counts, all those things play into whether or not that needs to be lit, but I guess my argument there would be, I have seen a plethora of pedestrian crosswalks on roads that are similar to Route 1, and I haven't seen that many being signalized, so, but if it comes back, it needs to be, Mario and I have spoken about that, so we'll just deal with it the best we can.
It was, it was mentioned by the sheriff deputy that, you know, it's a low white area or whatever, you know, but again, if there isn't any after dark operations there, that should certainly be noted.
Right, when I, when I spoke to the sheriff on the phone, he indicated to me that he was gonna approach the state about putting a yellow beacon across the street, across the road, like, you know, when you come to a four-way intersection, sometimes you see those yellow beacons, and I informed him that that was a seasonal crossing, those food trucks would not be there and Bentleys would be closed come October or so, so I didn't necessarily see the reason to have a yellow beacon that would be flashing all the time here, but that was the extent of our conversation at the time.
But the dance point, not that the food truck, the operating man, the dusk.
Right.
I mean, that may affect the engineer's judgment on which.
Right.
We're not, right, so we should know that.
Yeah. And I know I've been by that a bunch of times.
I have too.
And they get decent amount of vehicular traffic there, I don't know how many, you know, a couple of times when I was there, I've stopped a couple of times and, you know, there's been a few people that have walked across from Bentley's, but I've seen more vehicular traffic there than, well, coming from Bentley's, so I'm not sure.
People pulling into the parking lot and going to the food truck.
Yeah, yeah.
I have too.
Yeah, you have comments?
Yes, I, I spoke to Herb today, and he said, I asked him, I said, how many people do you normally see a day walk across there? And he said, well, so far, what he had noted, he had counted about 10, but, and there may be more than that on busy weekends, but if the sheriff is looking for an accident or a pedestrian waiting to get killed, he needs to move towards Biddeford because the people at the antique place that have all those tables out there are forever crossing Route 1, there's no crosswalk there, crossing Route 1, walking down beside Route 1 because that lawn there goes like this, so they can't walk on a lawn, and then coming across the campground road to go to J Brothers to get coffee and food, I mean, that, that's, that's worse.
That happens a lot, and then people out of the campground, they used to always cross to go to J Brothers to get ice and things like that, so there's been a lot of activity that crosses there even without the crosswalk.
Even without the crosswalk.
I think the crosswalk is a positive thing, and it's, you know.
So that's where we are, it turned, it morphed into something more than I thought it was going to be.
Okay.
In your packets, I also provided to you cross proposals that we finally received from, say, Environmental Solutions, as you recall, we went out to bid, we received no bids on our asbestos removal, so I went ahead and reached back out to the original survey company who provided us the survey on the asbestos that was there, who was Safe Environmental Solutions, and they provided us an estimate for the work, and they broke it down quite extensively within their, within their estimate. Task one, I've spoken to both the fire department as well as Public Works, and we will handle task one in-house, where we use our, our folks to, to remove whatever materials left in there prior to SRS coming in and doing their, doing their work, they, SES indicated to us that they will put the dumpsters on site for us to give themselves, we'll let them coordinate the dumpsters, we'll fill the dumpsters, and then that stuff will be removed, so we won't have a cost associated with that. The cost for the, for the U-waste, the only cost there will be that SES will remove the E-waste or U-waste, and we will then coordinate with Casella to have that material picked up and disposed of, they will not license dispose of it, but we can do that, so, so the 2250 will remain, and then the abatement and disposal of 2350 will be part of the package as well. In addition to that, the owner of the company has indicated an extreme willingness that he wants the fire escape, so, and he's going to use it at his property's unit name for a tree stand, so, interesting enough.
Do you charge him like 20 grand for it?
So, he is, he is put down the end that he will remove an estimate of $2,000 from his, that he will take the fire escape, so, if we take that away, we're at 23, 300 for the work to be performed, so, I think what I, for, I haven't signed it, I wanted to review it with you folks before signature, but the best I can see is probably the best solution to our asbestos abatement problem that we have in front of us, and we'd seek approval from the board to go ahead and sign this, for that work to be done.
Question, we're going to handle all removal of the fuel storage tanks and boilers? This client will handle all removal of fuel storage tanks?
Yeah, all of fuel is gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll handle the removal of the tanks and the boilers?
Right, well, the tanks and the boilers would be, there's no asbestos in the boilers, so the tank and the boiler would be in the phase that would be raised.
Oh, okay.
And we'll take that stuff, and that will all be put into a retainer.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion for Safe Environmental Solutions to move forward with them on their June 6th submittal, we have a motion from the board.
You want the dollar amount for it?
Might as well, yeah. A motion by Jason and a second by Tom, any other discussion? All those in favor? unanimous, beautiful.
Good, we'll keep going on that.
Yeah, that'd be nice, get that done.
Um, yeah, now that we have the, my next thing was, I don't have much media packets on it, but I've gone ahead and given the authority for the director to lock into a fee relative to the playground equipment. What I do want to do probably at your next meeting, if we've got some pretty decent weather, I want to go out Friday meeting or maybe take a quick recess and go out and look at the location that we're gonna put this playground in, Public Works will be removing trees and prepping the area, when the material, when the equipment shows up, they'll be able to place it. I had, had at least one, we had one question to the, to our insurance company, we're waiting for a response, part of the, part of the package has a Mario go around and seesaw in the package, and a lot of people don't institute those types of traditional playground equipment within it, so I asked the director to reach out to our MMA and determine whether or not we're okay with our insurance to provide those, if they, if they have real sun, real hot beat on that, we'll remove those from the equation and not install them, so, I think that's where we are with this project, and one other thing, but I do want to go out there and look at that location with you folks, so you know exactly where we're gonna put it, and how many trees are gonna be removed, the work will be done probably when the ground dries up or the ground is frozen, one or the other, right now, I think it's a little too wet, it may still be wet up here now for Public Works to get on there and get that stuff, so, but, prepare for your next meeting to maybe just walk out there and take a look around, so we'll re-flag it, so we have the proper locations for everything.
All right, moving on to business. So we get some renewals here, payroll warrant, code of conduct, and committee assignments.
Right. So, we do the payroll warrant first?
Yep.
We understand a motion and a second, and I'll send it on down for signature. I'll make a motion for some, for some quality for payroll.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason.
Second.
Second by Phil. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
What's that one?
Next one's the code of conduct.
Some move.
Okay, we have a motion by Velma, looking for a second on the code of conduct. Okay. All those in favor?
And the next one I have is selectmen's committee assignments, we just buy four that we try to have folks attend, the budget board obviously needs all the selectmen, unless I hear objections and bent, and then who's gonna represent the board, the planning board, finance committee, and RSU directors meeting.
I'll take the finance committee again, if no one else wants it.
I'll continue with the directors meeting. And when I can, I, you know, the planning board, I don't tend to bunch of them, but I'll try, usually what I do, as of late, I've been going in after and watching it on tape when I get time, but.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
And then our annual appointments.
Yes, I have the annual appointments here for animal control officer, assistant animal control, building inspector, code enforcement officer, electrical inspector for commercial, EMA director, fire chief, freedom of access officer, health officer, plumbing inspector, registrar voters, tax collector, and town clerk, they all have remained the same from the previous year, and I believe I gave you a copy of the annual appointments in your package.
Yep.
Okay, some move.
Okay, so I'll just read the names, animal control officer, Deborah Roach, assistant animal control officers, Teddy Myers, building inspector, James Nessel, James Nagel, code enforcement officer, James Nagel, electrical inspector for commercial is James Plamonded, EMA director, Reynolds Toddif, fire chief, Arundel Fire Rescue is Jerry Bullier, freedom of access officer is Keith Raffedin, health officer is Reynolds Toddif, plumbing inspector is James Nagel, registrar of voters is Emily Neto, tax collector is Jessica McPherson, and town clerk is Emily Neto, we have a motion by Velma, second.
Sorry?
Second by Jason, any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we are planning board nominees?
Yes.
Or not nominees, but.
Yes, I'm recommending appointment of the two existing planning board members who have now shown an interest to continue to serve, that would be Rich Ginnon and Susan Sennett.
Okay.
Would take probably a motion and second individually for each one? Or you can do them together, whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
Then I make a motion, we appoint Richard Ginnon and Susan Sennett to the planning board, and that, is that a one-year term?
No.
No, at least.
Three-year term?
Three years.
Okay, for a three-year term.
We have a motion by Velma for Susan and Richard, you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
The next, I have reappointment of two appeals board members, Paul Chansky and Joanne Grace, both folks that have served on the board in the past.
What's the term, is that three years?
Three years.
Okay.
Okay, then I will make a motion that we appoint those two, two, three-year terms on the appeals board.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason for Joe Chansky and what was her name?
It's Paul Chansky.
Uh, Paul Chansky.
Joanne Grace.
And Joanne Grace, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay. Charter amendments. Action.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a conversation relative to this, immediately after the town meeting, I had the opportunity to speak with Don Kindred, who was the chairman of that committee for you folks, indicating that, you know, what's our plan, and I think, you know, unless I hear strong objections, I think the plan would be to, our goal would be to hit the November elections, when we'll have a larger turnout, again, we need 622 voters to pass those charter amendments, that would be the time perhaps to do it, the other, the other thing I was thinking of is that we probably should have the committee come back together and just have a general discussion over, over this, she, she expressed some concerns to me, she thought that perhaps we didn't have enough information out to the public, that that's why we didn't have the turnout, the 622 that we needed to pass the amendments, I respectfully disagree with that, I don't think it had a lot to do with the charter amendments themselves, I think it had to do, there wasn't any meat of elections on that, on those elections that time, there weren't any local or state or federal things that were going on that would have spurred on a lot more interest perhaps of coming out on that evening and making those votes, so, that, that's what I think happened, and I think that when we get to November, I think we'll be confident to get the 622 that we need, the other thing we noticed, obviously, and I think we've all spoke about it, was that the flexibility that we were seeking within the charter amendments to provide a purchasing policy that would be administered through the board of selectmen. to provide a purchasing policy that would be administered through the board of selectmen was left off the charter amendments. So we need to, we need to add that back in uh to ensure that we have uh that flexibility as well and provide it to you folks. So my thought would be, if there's a date or a date certain that you think would be more appropriate to, to me, uh during the summer months, I would think that uh we would choose perhaps maybe an off Monday for the selectmen. So, you know, um you folks can just keep it on your schedule that the Monday you'd be here. I don't think we're gonna need more than one maybe, but I'd let, I'd let Donna sort of um dictate the process and procedure at that point with with feedback from the rest of the committee members as to how they want to proceed. So those are my thoughts on it.
I was just gonna ask that. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the public hearing that has to take place and all that information and so on. So any objections to just scheduling something? I'll do it on one of your off Mondays. And we'll, and I'll talk to Donna and see if we can set something up.
I mean, why don't, why don't we wait till as we get closer to the public hearing? That way we can kind of kill two birds with one stone, right? I mean, really, I don't think we're gonna change anything. We're gonna try to resubmit what was submitted before.
Right.
So we get together just maybe a month before the public hearing or something like that to rehash it, kind of go over what we're gonna do with the public hearing and seeing if that's, that's my, that's just my thought. I don't see anything different. Yeah, I don't see anything different than what we did before, but.
Or like it'll get somebody.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Do that in September, and then in October, we'll start sending out information to make sure everybody knows, they know what we need.
Sometime right after Labor Day or so.
Yeah.
Right, because we'll have to have the public hearing the, right at the beginning of October. Right, so November seventh, or whenever the election is, I'm like.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, check with Donna, see what she thinks, but.
We'll do it.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing that I wanted to chat about was that I provided to you in your package a a letter that um both the engineering firm and myself have sort of prepped together to, in our hopes, to send to the board of trustees of Kennybuck Sewer District. Essentially, what we're, we're trying to do with the letter is to get a commitment to earnestly discuss an interconnection agreement and provide to them how many gallons per day would essentially need to be engineered within to their new uh, their new plant in order to accommodate any um, any flow from the town of Arundel. This does not commit us to an ongoing or committed uh agreement moving forward, because we do not have do not have the uh cost analysis to upgrade their infrastructure along with whatever cost it would be to the town for their new uh treatment plant, as well as we don't have any costs associated right now with our uh infrastructure. They have to be in in Arundel on the Route One corridor. All this does is to indicate to them our willingness to move forward and our will, and hopefully their willingness to work with us to um, to iron out all the details. So the letter is that and not only, to, to hopefully get them to accept the fact that we're, we're ready to go, um at least with discussions. Thoughts, suggestions? I'm sure you all had a chance to take a look at the letter.
It just shows that we're serious about this. I mean, we're.
Anybody else get any comments? As I do.
I wish there was a way we could do it ourselves. Can we do a private, I know we can't dump into the Canyon River, but wasn't there an option of creating a uh?
The, there is an option.
A private, like a leach bed or something?
The, the, the option is yes. We would, we would have to, we'd have to find land along the Route One corridor that would be uh advantageous to put in our own septic treatment system, which would be um essentially, as you described, large uh, a large septic system with uh, with a leach field and so on and so forth. So it's a possibility that that, that could occur. I can have the engineers look at that. Um, we, we dismissed it because of the cost. Not only the cost to purchase the land, but the cost of developing our own system.
Who's to say, like, let's say we pay all this money to tie into Canyon River ten years from now. The readings in the Mouson River are off the charts, and they're like, Arundel, we can no longer take your, I mean, we're contaminating the river at way higher rate than, so we've spent fifty million dollars, let's say, and Canyon River all of a sudden says.
Well, I, I think these inter, interconnection agreements are far more stringent than that. They just can't they, as a, as a trustees can't say, we're not gonna take your flow anymore.
Right.
Because um our chart, you know, they still have their other customers that they have to deal with. If they have a a violation of discharge, and that's an issue that the treatment system would have to take care of.
Their system.
They need to fix. They've obligated to us to take that flow. They just can't arbitrarily stop it. And, and I guess the other thing I have is that we spent, what, thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars to place that uh pipe under that branded bridge that's been capped on both ends. Uh, so our, so our, our enthusiasm or our interest in moving that way, uh I think we've put our money already out there to show them that at least we'll have the discussion. Now, you know, between us, that we may get to a point that, that it's cost prohibitive.
Right.
But we don't know that yet. We have none of that data.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but um they were only allowing a certain percentage of the Route One corridor. It wasn't like every piece of property on Route One could tie into sewer. It was only like a ten percent.
Right, I, again, you know, you, there's a variety of ways to look at it. And I mean, if we got to that point, we would have to, we'd have to get ourselves a uh, a strong firm, I think Wright Pierce may be a, a strong firm, to provide us guidelines, suggestions, how that whole goes together, because um oftentimes you have a readiness to serve that goes by somebody, and there's a fee involved in that, whether they take advantage of the sewer system or not. The ability of it being there, there's a cri, there's a price for that. So um, these are all kinds of things that have not, not even been flushed out again. I think what we're trying to do with the letter is to get a commitment from them to continue the discussions in earnest. Uh, right now, the um, from our engineers, they thought that we went away because they hadn't heard from us. You know, I guess they're not interested. And I, and I, what I want to do with the letter is say, yes, we are interested to continue our discussions with you.
I mean, I think it's probably way too early now, but to me, I think at some point in time, we need to go send a letter out or, or you know, a poll or a survey out to all those residents, residents that would be affected and asking, hey, are you in favor of this? You know, if this is gonna cost you X amount of dollars. I know we don't know that number now, but I certainly don't want to go through all of this hassle and have half the residents on Route, uh half the businesses on Route One saying, no, they're not interested in hooking up.
Yeah, but we don't even know yet that they can take everybody.
I, I know. I, I understand that, but at some point in time, we need to, we need to ask those, those folks along Route One just what the interest really is. You know, I mean, here we are, we're making, you know, we're talking this decision, but we don't know if everybody wants to hook into it.
That hundred and sixty thousand gallons was done on the study that Wright Pierce did on the Route One corridor, so including the Cape Run and the cottages.
So from Cape Run to all the way down.
Correct.
Now, is Cape Run still interested? And if we take it to the Camp Brown Road, taking it to their property?
No idea.
Yeah, Joe's not there.
Joe's not there. I know that they, they went ahead, they've started their other phases. They have their, their septic systems that they've placed in to take care of their waste, but um that may change. I know that Joe's interest in it was not particularly for the cottages. It was for the nine-eight-year business he has up front. And that this would, this would help them develop that lot.
And on some other towns, if they run a small line down, the people on that street are obligated to connect. They have to.
Yeah.
And they pay their fees.
Right. I mean, that's a decision. Right, I mean, that's a decision that I think that we need to say that, listen, if we're gonna put this in, you're gonna have to hook up to it.
Yeah.
And it's gonna cost you X amount, and I, you know, we're personally, I don't want to start a war with a whole bunch of businesses that says, no, we're good with what we got. Yeah, it could be, right. Yeah, yeah.
But I, I, you know, the letter would just get us to at, at least indicate to the sewer district our willingness to work with them through this process. And again, the, the devil's gonna be in the details and the, and the cost associated with that. You know, I don't even want to speculate. It could be substantial, but I don't know that. We don't know until, I think until we get a, uh, until they know that we're ready to go, or at least have those discussions, then perhaps we can get into infrastructure development on their side of the river. What it's gonna cost for infrastructure development on our side of the river from Camp Brown Road all the way down to the um, down to the river. And then we can also talk with the Arundel Cottage folks to see if they're still uh receptive to running from their facility down to Camp Brown Road, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think we, I think we need to, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, do you want, do you want to, to sign this, or do you want me to change the bottom and put or have, or have me sign it on your behalf? How would you like to do it?
I'd have you sign it.
Yeah, we can hold you accountable.
Yeah.
Something to ask of us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do it. Thank you.
All right, next item is the fire protection ordinance.
Yes, I have a email that I, I believe I placed in the back. It's from Lee Jay for reference to his thoughts relative to uh the passage of fire protection ordinance for the town, certainly adopted or the adoption to be around the NFPA one, NFPA one-on-one standards as opposed to developing our own ordinance. I believe that is the basis of this discussion. Uh, both both the code officer and um the planner have spoken about this. Late last week, I sat down with the fire chief and spoke about this. He's all in favor of having this ordinance or having something placed. And so I guess what I'm seeking here is if it's something that you want us to pursue. Obviously, an ordinance provision would need to be well-written and placed on a town meeting warrant for people to approve or disapprove. But uh, this will at least get us started. If I know that there's some earnest uh support here on the board, we'll go ahead and put the legwork in and uh put together a package that we can present to you and that you folks can just say, hey, hey, hey.
Wasn't the chief against this? Or maybe it was Chief Mullin, but wasn't? We talked about this quite a while back, and there was a reason why they didn't want to go through this.
Right. I think it may have been uh Chief, Chief Mullin at the time, because this will put a lot, put some additional responsibility on the fire department. And uh Chief Bullier is well aware of that and very supportive of the fact that I think he needs, we need to have a little more standards in place, particularly with the growth that we're experiencing over the last several years.
How does this affect, going to this standard, how does this affect like a regular home owner?
I don't know. Whatever the NFPA standard is, we'd have to look at that. Um, obviously, we would give you a synopsis and provide that information.
Single family doesn't really, it's more of like multifamily and four or more units.
Right.
Commercial buildings.
Yeah, and does it have something to do with residential standard on sprinklers too?
Yeah, but the, yeah, that's a separate.
Separate altogether.
Yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind of an ordinance within an ordinance then, like it's kind of a takeoff of what we have now, like as soon as you reach a certain amount of houses. You got an option of doing a fire pole and a sister sprinkler reserve.
It, it, you know, I, I wish I could remember exactly what it was, but I thought that if this was gonna add significant cost. I mean, obviously, we want to be safe and we want to do things the right way, but there was an argument that this would be a significant cost. I thought that's what was cost to the developer or, right, in order to do or put this stuff. I, I think it was Chief, again, I can't remember, but I know there was a.
Probably gonna add a lot more work to his plate if that wasn't gonna be to his benefit, so. This is, this is gonna open up a whole new avenue of grants, though. Because NFPA, they, they funnel money, you know, if your town isn't part of the NFPA adoption, then you don't, you don't have access to those grants. You know, there's all kinds of benefits to this. Life safety, the one-on-one is the life safety one-on-one. That's, that's huge.
So do you want us to uh at least entertain um providing you more data and more interest in this? Okay, me too. Right.
Yeah.
I don't even know all of it.
Right.
Right. The, the thing is, we, you know, as we start, as we start this process, we can have the uh, the planner here, the code officer and the fire chief to talk about it more and how those all intertwine together to make this thing work. Okay.
All right. Approval of accounts payable and payroll warrant.
So move.
Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason. All those in favor? Okay, um, one thing that I wanted to add, I, I forgot, was you all have a package in front of you on the mics. The new mics. Uh, I guess bottom line on this is seven thousand four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
What it looks like.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, we recoup some of our expenses when we, when we sell these mics here.
Right.
And I know we may even, we not even need the stands. I think the new goose neck mics come with a stand on them.
Right, yeah, the stands won't work. So.
Are the goose necks hardwired?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna go to a hardwired system. Don't have to worry about batteries. We'll have like a long extension cord to go out, out there. I think if we'd have gone, I, personally, I would have preferred the wireless, but it would have been a, probably double the price.
Well, what'd he say, fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars for wireless?
Oh, yeah, so. And, you know, this should take care of all of our audio needs. They're gonna do all the work. They'll mount all the plates. Um, there'll be plates that are mounted, plugged in, plugs out on the back, you know, to feed the wires. So my only concern on this is, you know, how do we move forward with the seven thousand dollars? Well, you know, we were working with the other company that, you know, had a dollar amount that was, some was in that same range, but I think they were like eight, they were over eight thousand dollars, a little over eight thousand dollars, that was how much. Yeah, and they haven't come through yet, so. You know, I certainly want to move forward with this, but.
We'll split it into two budgets, like thirty-seven out of this budget?
Well, we've come out of the bond money. We still have a
Yeah.
Little bit of bond money left.
No government funds left?
Plenty to cover this. No, you're not touching my money.
We just got a second tranche of uh funds came into us, so we got a two hundred and fifty-two thousand more dollars.
Well, see, yeah.
We'll save that for the next budget season. We'll save that for the next budget season. I'm already working on things.
You'd have to have Tommy.
So it's the board's pleasure. Yeah, so we're just. Yep. Oh, that's just running it, running the cable up and through behind the, behind the TV today.
Tied into our, tied into our amplifier.
Who's gonna do that for us?
I'm sure this, this company will do it for us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a nice discussion with a gentleman who provided this estimate to us.
So, um, when we talked, I, I double-checked with him again, but the issue is not actually getting the equipment. The issue is scheduling installation. And he had stated that, you know, we're looking six to seven months away. Maybe a little bit more depending on what's going on because of, you know, personnel and what have you and, and the work that they have in front of them, so I don't I don't think no matter. Yep.
I'm looking.
Yeah.
Leave it to our lawyer. So, um.
I think if you have confidence in this company, I mean, you've worked with two, two different companies, that we've gotten two different estimates.
Yeah, and, and I've had these guys, they've done work for Pratt. I haven't worked with them because I, I'm in a different role now, but I've used them numerous times at Pratt and good company to deal with and we've never had any issues and, you know, they know their stuff. Not saying that the other company didn't either, but, you know, these guys.
But you've worked with this company.
Yeah. So the only, yeah, the only thing with, with last company that we, and maybe that's probably why he's kind of, because we had talked about trading these things in, but
No, I think you mean the trade-in, it's like, what, four?
I don't, I don't remember now. I'd have to go back in one, but, you know.
$4,000 pretty quick.
When you're talking about the mics and, and, because they're gonna take the mixer and they're gonna take all of that also. So once they take that out, he can give us a, probably a good idea of what we can get for it and I might, we tend to think that, you know, worth, you know, a couple of grand here anyways, so. Don't, don't necessarily know, but certainly not gonna hold on to them.
Yeah, I'm making the most of what we move forward. That's one of the biggest complaints from the public is.
And, and I got it again from the last planning board meeting that they, you know, Lee Jay gave a whole presentation when we were here on the LD, if I forget.
2003.
Yeah, LD 2003 and there were a couple of folk that were listening in and couldn't hear them, so. Right, so we have a motion by Jason.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Velma to move ahead with the headlight audio visual for a total of
The down payment now of 370388.
Yep. And I'll work with Keith and get this signed off wherever and off to him. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Good. And the other, only other thing that I have, Keith, is any more information on the snowplow?
I got an estimate today from Roger, one of the Viking's Q's snowplow. He indicated to me that he will not get an estimate from Tentco because H.B. Fairfield and Tentco are the same company. And H.B. Fairfield is the equipment they have, so they suggest that if you're gonna do it, you might as well not even take the Tentco bid. Right now, the Viking Q's is a little bit less than what was for H.B. Fairfield, but it doesn't include the, any of the push frames or anything like that. So I want to get a chance to take a look at it before we make a recommendation to you and get a chance to talk with Roger a little bit more about it.
We're gonna have to hold a special town meeting for that?
At, at bench, if you want to do it then, yeah, because we're too late to do something. I mean, the books are pretty well closed. We've finished up payroll today. And you just finished off submitting the payroll warrant, payable warrant. That's it. There'll be some other things. We might have an accessory for some bills that may come in at the end, but I would strongly suggest not to incur that type of expense at the end of the year without us having a little bit more discussion on this. And at that point, we just have to put it in front of the people and ask to use the funds, so. You guys have been pretty good about explaining things, so let's use your silver tongues again.
And, and, and Brimstone Road, where do we stand with the Brimstone Road?
I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to Roger about it lately, but I do know that we were still waiting for somebody to give us a contact for the Spectrum.
Spectrum.
And he thought, I haven't been up by it, so I can't tell you if the, if, if the, if the lines have been holding on.
No, they haven't.
Brimstone.
No.
They're still there?
No, I go down there all the, yeah, I could.
And then last week, they were putting new lines on it. You gotta be kidding me, Phil. You gotta be kidding me.
Yeah, they're running the fiber, right? Well, it's the, um.
The fiber company.
Yeah, it's a fiber company. Right, they've, they've been running fiber all through town here, so.
They did Tulsa Road and there were five guys in front of my house with bucket trucks. Not one spoke English, like, no English. There wasn't even a communicator, like for a, for a resident to come out and ask questions, like, they would just stare at you.
That happened last summer when they cleared the trees.
Yeah.
It was all, somebody didn't speak English and they were asking, my son and I were like, we couldn't understand them.
I made a joke with one of them. I said, oh, does this mean my internet's gonna get faster? And they, all five of them just stared at me with no response.
Sounds like the guys that did my roof, same thing.
Okay. Motion to adjourn at 8:12 PM. Motion by Jason, second.
Second.
By Velma. All those in favor?